December 27, 2017 at 9:00 a.m. in the courthouse, meeting room number two northeast corner, third floor with three members present. Join me please in the salute for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My wheels are locking up here. I don't know what to do. I need a grease gun.
We can do that.
I'm recording.
Okay. Notice to the public, Board of Supervisors welcomes comments from the public during the time allowed for discussion. You are requested to approach the microphone, state your name for the record, and limit the time used to present your remarks in order that others may be given the opportunity to speak. The normal process in any agenda item is for the chairperson to read the item from the agenda. The board is given an opportunity to comment on the issue and/or place a motion on the floor. An opportunity for discussion may be presented at which time the public may participate and roll call vote will follow. Number one, item number one, approval or amendment of agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the agenda as printed.
And I'll second. Been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda as printed. Is there any discussion? If not, roll call vote please.
Patton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Selassie?
Motion's been approved. Item number two, years of service recognition. Joel Phillips. Joel is not here. Joel's been here with the service, with the sheriff's office for 15 years. Let's see if I got it. Joel Phillips served Marshall County as a chief deputy sheriff. We're extending an expression of appreciation for 15 years of service and we have this certificate for Joel. The next one though is Cindy Wrightzel, auditor and recorder's office. Cindy, would you come forward please? Cindy, this is, may it be known that Cindy Wrightzel served Marshall County as assistant county auditor for elections. We are extending in our expression of appreciation for 15 years of service and we hereby present this certificate to you. And Cindy has done a wonderful job and has spent a lot of time working with our elections and she's one of the main people there. So, we want to get her picture here. Steve, Dave.
Cindy, thank you very much for your service.
Congratulations. I don't know how many different votes you and I have canvassed, but it's been a bunch of them over the years.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, then the next is the consent agenda. Approval minutes from regular session of December 12, 2017. Item number four is file clerk of district court report, 1117, general supplemental fund surcharge of $815.64. Item number five, accept annual manure management plan update. Edler Brothers Farm, ID number 58297. U-Bank site, annual update report received and placed on file with no changes made due to the manure management plan. Item number six, approval of official newspapers for January 2018. And that would be for the full year, wouldn't it?
Yes.
And for publications of county proceedings, Times Republican, Marshalltown, and Mid-Iowa Enterprise, State Center Iowa. Item number seven, yearly appointments commencing January 1, 2018. Commendation, compensation commission, one-year term. Owner operators of agricultural property, George Batinger, Ron D. Jakey, Darrell Gilmore, Gene Weimers, Trent Upaw, David Scott, and Beris Brocklin. Next then is the real estate salesperson or real estate brokers. Dean Elder Jr., Martha Garcia, Deb Block, Christopher Broden, Bob Grimes, Val Akar.
Alkar.
Alkar. My tongue got stuck there. And G. Ward Miller. Owners of city property, Larry Southard, Mary Holland, Sarah Hesman, Alan Hilliman, Howard Stegman, Doug West, and Gene Clausen. Persons having knowledge of property values of reason of their occupation, Cindy Smiley, Reed Riskadall, Russ D. Paul, Wayne McDonald, Dean Elder Jr., Joseph W. Ludley, and Leslie Nichols. Then on to item number eight, appointments commencing January 1, 2018. A is Marshall County Conservation Board appoint Steve Armstrong to fulfill the unexpired term of Julie Stahl and reappoint Jeff Mathis for a five-year term. B is Green Mountain Street Lighting District, reappoint Jolene Primus, one-year term. C is Marshall County Board of Health, reappoint Keith Blumquist and Dr. Ken Lyons for a three-year term. D, Mental Health Disability Services Advisory Board, reappoint Teresa Lang, Hanny Garcia Herter, Rhonda Drezy, and three-year terms. And please also consider the appointment of Rich Byers for the chair for 2018-19 and Al Fergman for vice chair 2018-19. E is zoning commission, reappoint Bill Hodson, Hobson, three-year term. F is Marshall County Zoning Administrator, Public Environmental Health Director, and We Commissioner, reappoint John Coons for a one-year term. G is Board of Adjustment, appoint Rick Lant, five-year term. H, Marshall County Medical Examiner, Lea Bethel, two-year term. And I, Marshall County Commission of Veterans Affairs, appoint Tommy S. Lamb and reappoint Laurel E. Phipps, three-year term. Item number nine, approved claims. Approved claims as audited and authorized to county auditor and recorder to issue payment of the same. The listing of claims paid at this meeting and all claims paid in the month of December will publish as part of the first meeting in January. The Chair would entertain a motion. Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed.
Mr. Chair, I will second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as printed. Roll call vote please.
Patton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes. Selassie? Yes.
Okay, moving on then.
Just a comment.
Yeah.
We live in a community where everybody is given very freely of their commitment of time and talent. Every time I've ever asked anybody to serve, they've stepped up without question and said yes, and I would believe that you guys have found the same thing. And that's kind of the fun part about living here in Iowa is everybody's willing to become part of serving government. It makes a big difference.
These are a lot of busy people here.
Big time.
And they're taking time out too.
No, but good government requires active participation and these folks definitely step up to the plate.
Thank you for those comments. A lot of, a lot of good people there. Item number 10 then is to approve personnel action, rehire Eric Divick. Secondary road department temporary part-time is needed at $20.85 per hour effective January 1, 2018. The Chair would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I motion that we approve the personnel action of the rehire of Eric Divick. Secondary road department temporary part-time is needed at $20.85 an hour effective January 1, 2018.
And I'll second.
Been moved and seconded then to approve this personnel action. If there's any further discussion?
How many years has he helped us out during the winter?
I don't know. Over 20?
Yeah.
Over 20, okay.
I figured it was, I thought it was before Amy was here the first time.
I mean, he's been around longer than you have.
And we needed a couple more. We would definitely take some applications for part-time help if anybody thinks they want to.
This is for, be for, snow pushing.
Yeah.
Okay. So, maybe that can be mentioned in the paper too.
I haven't done any formal advertising for it, but usually we don't have.
I thought maybe Adam could just mention that as we're, as part of, as part of our meeting here.
Adam, you seem to be getting a lot of hints this morning.
You're a good guy, Adam.
Eric has told me that he has never been stuck before with the snowplow. Can you verify that? I wish not to comment.
Okay. It speaks volumes. Thank you. Number 11. Item number 11 is.
We got a, we got a vote.
Oh, you haven't voted yet?
No.
Roll call vote please.
Patton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Selassie?
Yes.
Okay, the motion has been carried. Moving on then to item number 11. Resolution 2017-0053, discussion of possible action to adopt resolution 0053, resolution of acceptance. And the Marshall County Board of Supervisors accepts the Marshall County Courthouse Elevator Project under contract to Hay Construction Company Incorporated of Marshalltown, Iowa as substantively complete as documented by the Substantial Completion Certificate. In accordance with statutory requirements, the Marshall County Board of Supervisors authorizes release of retinage amounts of judged, amounts as judged appropriate by the architect and the Marshall County Buildings and Grounds Director. Amounts withheld shall be consistent with and consider outstanding punch list work. As required by contract, the contractor will submit lien waivers and consent of security for final payment, release of retinage, and before any payment of retinage is made. At this time, the Chair would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I would take a motion to accept resolution number 2017-0053, resolution of acceptance.
Mr. Chair, I will, I will second that with one small change. We need to adopt resolutions.
Okay. Okay?
Yes.
Okay.
My fault.
No, my problem. Any further discussion? If not, roll call vote please.
Patton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Selassie?
Yes.
Okay, been moved and seconded and moved to adopt the resolution. Moving on then to item number 12, request for field entrances. Discussing possible action to approve a request from Ed Miller for installation of field entrances on Marsh Avenue. Mr. Miller, would you like to have any, come to the, if you wish, come, come to the mic and, and tell us who you are and explain what you feel.
I'm hearing impaired.
Okay, okay. Use the microphone, Ed, and tell us what your thoughts are.
I'm hearing impaired, I'm sorry.
Oh, you can't hear us? Okay.
Well, I've got hearing aids, but.
They don't work very good.
Well, they're terrible.
Okay, okay. Well, Ed, can you, can you come over here to the mic and explain what your thoughts are? Okay.
I'm Edward J. Miller and I got in a big hurry on the driveway. I made a little mistake putting it in a little too fast. We, my bulldozer operator went down and checked where we were putting it in. We had the culverts laying there and a junk dealer, two of them were down looking at them. He got real nervous because it was out of sight and he was afraid that they, they were thinking about maybe stealing them. But anyway, that's a long story, but, so he went ahead by mistake, too fast, installed the culverts, made the driveway. And when I heard about it, I was kind of shocked, but it was a mistake. I realized that, to do it without inspection. And from then on, assistant county engineer came out and looked at it and said he doubted if it was legal. He said, there isn't quite enough sight distance from the top of the hill. And at this point in time, I'd like to show you the driveway.
And aerial photo. And you've got one here.
Yeah.
The drive is at the south, at the south end of the red area that I've got kind of highlighted red. It's right at that, that property line is where he was wanting to put the drive down here.
Yeah, that's right.
And, and actually he's planning on putting one on each side of the road there.
What's the dark blue line?
Okay.
The dark blue line would be the right way that I would need to acquire to correct the grade and make a drive possible there, but that's, let's see if he requests, but that, because I've had a request permit to modify the grade there, so the drive would work.
Yeah, this shows you the driveway.
The, the location that you were proposing was right down there.
Right, right. See, this is.
This is a possible location as far as proper sight distance is where the, the north end of that red area is. I could actually approve one there with, with plenty of sight distance.
But the driveway's already here then?
It's just right, right, right.
Right across here. This is my property, this is my property.
Okay.
We're, I made an agreement with the neighbors. Mark Hal Bloom is over here and Varan is here and Joe Hunt's here. And we took out all the old rotten fences and we're, we're going to just have a grassy strip between our farms and I'm going to mow it. I'm going to start over here and mow all this and cross over here and mow Joe's, then my land's over here too. And that's where we're at. And we talked about adding 10 foot. The county engineer said if we took 10 foot along here, he could take the hill off, but then there's electric poles too along here, go down here.
That complicates it a little.
That complicates it. And I've thought about this quite a while.
Where's it sitting now?
And I'd rather try to cross without the culvert. Just go down.
And here's where you can put it.
Dangerous.
Where is it?
It's going to almost break the PTO shaft.
Oh, yeah. That's on each side of the road.
My other thought was to put in a sign here, like on South 14, there are signs that say hidden driveway on Highway 14. And I thought if a person put a sign up and I would pay for it, it would say caution, hidden driveway, 500 feet. I, I would pay for the sign, but.
Have you visited with Paul about that then?
No, I just mentioned it to him.
Yeah, we, we met out there once. Do you want to, is there anything else? I mean, I can kind of tell him what we discussed if you'd like.
Yeah, he said if I give him 10 foot all along here.
17.
How many?
17.
17?
I'd take the right way to 50 feet as, outside of 33.
I thought about that and I would rather try to, try to go down the ditch and come up than do that.
And that's.
Because it would, excuse me.
Go ahead.
It would disrupt, we'd have to put driveways square back here on each side in my field and take out that much good land. And probably lose a half acre.
17 feet on both sides of the road.
Yeah, we'd have to go on both sides. We'd have to turn up here, go up here, and come back down here.
But I think you're talking right here.
What you'd be looking at is .18 acres that you'd have to take out of production here to run that drive, so it'd be .18 on both sides, .36. If we were to do anything that would be an improvement, it would take 17 feet on both sides of the road, so it would take .78 acres out of production for that option. So there'd be less impact from just putting the approved drive at the top of the hill.
I didn't mean to interrupt.
And is the only reason for doing this improvement so that you've got adequate sight distance for this driveway?
For safe drive, yes, for the, for, for the people using the drive and for people on Marsh. So they're using the road.
And as I understand this, he applied for the permit, but put it in, put it in, put it in before it was approved?
Correct.
And he did that on his own?
Yes, well, his, his contractor.
Okay, and you've asked him to move it?
I, I told him where the approved location could be.
Okay.
Flag where we could actually allow the drive to go. Now, the other side of it is too that where it could be approved is a drive field that wouldn't even need a pipe, but without an approved permit, the person putting the drive in doesn't know whether or not they need a pipe or what size of pipe they need.
Okay, so it gets right down to the fact that they just didn't wait for anybody to come out and inspect it?
Yeah, misunderstanding, miscommunication.
Okay.
Ed, you had something else?
Yeah, I do. Okay. This driveway will be used six times a year. It'll start in July twice, August twice, September twice to mow.
Just for mowing.
Mow and spray.
You won't be pulling grain out of the.
No, we've already put up cables across it. There'll be padlock. And it'll be shut down except for then six times. There's no reason to use it. I don't want people driving in there anyway, you know? They'll drive in there for the fun of it.
Right.
So that's kind of where I'm at. And we've already got them put up and the cables are, it's locked right now. So that's kind of where we're at.
So the only reason for the culverts down here is just for your mowing?
Exactly. That's the only reason we'll ever use it. It's locked, there's cables up, it'll never be open except for that.
At this, at this point, we never know what people are going to use, use it for a few years from now.
That's my issue.
Yeah, I know.
There's no mechanism for control.
Yeah, yeah. Understand.
I can understand that. I, I know there's probably 350 feet of visibility now to the top of the hill.
Does that, because there's not compliance with whatever rules there are, does that put us liable if there's an accident?
Well, I mean, I've found that we're always liable, even if it's meeting the specifications. But if we approve a drive that we know doesn't meet what our, what our minimum sight distance policy is, it's opening things up for sure. I wouldn't want to stand in front of the judge and say I did.
I wouldn't either.
If, if, if we disallowed this and we made the, the culvert to be put back up here and the only reason then for, this is permissible, permissible here?
Yes, that's top of the hill, right there, about 500 feet from the existing drive.
That's where you would prefer it to be?
That's, that's where I would, if we, if we had a drive for that property, that's where I would approve it to be.
If, if the only reason to come down here is for mowing, is there a fence along here or is it just, just?
No. No, we took the fences out.
Okay.
They've fallen, fallen down.
I, I can't.
No, I have not. Used to have 508.
Yeah. If, if there's only a reason for coming down here to mow, I would think a mower could come along here and not touch the crop. Or is that a deep ditch?
It's three feet deep maybe, is it? Maybe at least three, some of these.
I, I don't, I.
He was looking at the option, sorry. He was looking at the option of one thing he could do and it doesn't really, there's no way we can prevent it, would be just to drive through the ditch and go into the field right there at the corner where the drive was wanted to be.
Well, that's.
But I don't have any control over that, but I'm also not going to think we accept any liability if he decides to do that.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, farmers should drive in the ditch, mow ditches, do, you know.
For the purpose of mowing.
There are egg purposes there, they're in there anyway.
Yeah, for the purpose of mowing, you, you, yeah. And, and for mowing, I don't see coming along down here that that's a problem.
But the, and that's why I put this area down here, because the potential would be for impacts on .18 acres. If it was, I think you said maybe 16 feet wide, we would.
Yeah, I missed that thing.
But that's, that'd be the impact for, you know, for having the drive up where it actually works.
You know, Arturo Michelle got me a career.
I understand.
Vietnam, right?
That's, that's, that's the era, yeah, yeah. Um, I'd leave this up to the board at this time. The motion that we can have is to request installation of field entrances, where, where the permit would be at the top of the hill?
I, I've never run into this with a, we have a, a permit process that's by board policy, so if your wish is that we just go by policy, I return Ed an approved permit for the location on top of the hill that is, that has proper sight distance. And he can elect to put a drive there or he can elect to not put a drive there. He don't have to put it in because we got, we approved a permit. The only other issue that we have is there's currently two drives down in that corner on the south end of the property that have been installed and they're outside of specification. They're likely frozen right now. They may or may not be taken out for months, but not going to be used either because it sounds like he's got to pay. Ultimately, if someone puts a road drive in, if they won't take it out, we take it out and we'll charge them for the services and time and materials of getting it removed.
Well, I would be hesitant to approve this because of the liability issue and the fact that the permitting process wasn't followed.
He applied, he just didn't get the results of the application.
I understand.
Yeah.
His contractor, it sounds like he probably should have waited.
Well, at this time, if, if we, if we do nothing, then it's up to you then, since the permit was not followed through. Or do you, do you need something from the, from us?
I, I don't think we do.
Because the rules are already there.
But there's, this is, you know, if Ed and I come to an impasse on what's going to happen, then we come to you.
So if we deny this, what's on the agenda here?
It's.
It just goes to you following the rules?
It just reverses back to our approved policy.
And you're, okay. Mr. Chairman, I would motion that we deny the request of installation of field entrances on Marsh Avenue, south of Highway 30 between Highway 30 and Lurie Road.
It's been moved, is there a second?
I'll second.
Nan, did you catch all that?
I did.
Okay. Okay, what we're looking at then is denying the culverts where they are now located. Is there any further discussion?
And that just simply puts it back into your hands for following the proper procedures?
Correct.
Ed, you understand what's going on here right now? Not completely?
You may want to put it in writing.
All right.
Where it's at, Ed, we're going to have to deny it. One reason is for our liability because it's not where the permit should be. The permit should be up here. We're going to deny culverts here. We're going to allow culverts up here for liability purposes.
I understand. Very hard to understand. Would it lock the cables up four times, six times a year?
But no, liability now continues forever as long as they're there and you can't control it forever.
No.
So that's, that's, that's why.
People have brains forever.
Some do. Any further discussion? Roll call vote please.
I don't want, I, I don't want to have a problem up here. That's out. I don't want to ruin my, my field border with a 12-foot wide driveway. I've took, it took a lot of trouble to take the fences out and to get that all square so we, when we farm, we can come right down here with our corn platter.
You got a straight shot.
16-inch platter.
Yeah.
What do you do? You can't.
Ed, the only thing you're going to, from what I understand, the only thing you're going to bring down here is a mower. How wide, how wide is your mower?
How long?
How wide?
12 foot.
Okay, and then if it's up in the air and you move it over. Okay, and then if it's up in the air and you move it over, uh, into the ditch a little bit, the wheel's gonna be there, I, I don't think you're gonna lose it.
You can't move it, it's pulled behind.
I realize.
It's a rotary.
Got one.
It's not a bat wing? Not a bat wing?
No.
Doesn't fold up?
No, it doesn't bat, it doesn't fold.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
No, sir.
Roll call vote, please.
Patton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Well, Austin?
Yes.
But I probably got, uh, oh, over a thousand dollars in the, the culverts, and the bulldozer operator worked. He may refund me. He done it to keep it from being stolen. He put it, he went ahead with it. And I guess the time was normal for us to wait a month from the time I got the permit for it to be looked at. I didn't realize that. We got nervous because of the time of the year. We thought something would happen right now, it'd freeze solid. But it didn't happen.
I understand.
Well, that's what we're gonna have to do, Ed. For liability purposes, we're not going to allow these down here.
Okay.
Okay?
Who, who takes them out? The county? Can I take them out? They take them out, I gotta pay for it, I guess.
That's right, that's right.
That's another five hundred.
I don't know.
No.
I don't know. We're sorry, but looking at it for liability purposes, that's where we're gonna have to, that's where we're gonna have to go, Ed.
Please put this all in writing for him.
When people drive on the road at fifty mile an hour, they're supposed to have two hundred feet to stop. A hundred foot for your brain to react, and another hundred foot to stop. And this has got three hundred and fifty feet. So that's what I can't understand.
Actually, we're at five hundred feet? How mu, how much?
We're looking for five hundred, we have about three fifty here.
Yeah.
That's a fifth of a mile. I just can't believe it. I'm sorry.
Well, that's, that's what we're, that's what we're gonna have to do, Ed. So, thank, thank you for coming, appreciate that.
Thank you for your time, and I appreciate it. I would like to have the culverts not damaged if possible.
As we sit now, your contractor needs to remove them, or you somehow needs to remove them.
All right, well, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ed.
Thanks, Ed.
You bet. Thank you.
Moving on then to item number thirteen is extrication equipment, discussion of possible action to supplement City of Marshalltown Fire Department and State Center Fire Department in the purchase of new extradition equipment. Okay, the background on this a little bit is that for probably back in the eighties sometime, every time that Marshall County, or Marshalltown Fire Department purchased new Jaws of Life, supervisors participated in that. It's been fifteen thousand dollars. When that came up, it came up at about the time that, that I was visiting with, with Kim Elder, and Kim said, "State Center is trying to do this also." And so I went to the firemen's meeting and said, "What, what are we gonna do, guys? I don't want to hurt anyone's feelings. I don't want to take all the money away from Marshalltown, but can we split this some way?" And, uh, my question was, when I asked Marshall, our Mar, State Center, was, "Can you use some money?" And they said, "Oh, yes." It takes about thirty thousand dollars, they're at, what, about fifteen?
Yeah.
They're abouts. And, uh, and at that point, uh, the fire chief, Ryerson, leaned over and says, "Bill," he said, "if you want to split some of this money, that's fine with me." So we're here today, guys, to talk about that. We've got a representative from the State Center Fire Department. Would you like to come forth, tell us who you are, and then, and for the record, and just tell us where you're at on your program and, uh, and what you, how you plan to use it? And in what area are you going to use it in?
My name's Brad Fons, Assistant Fire Chief with State Center Fire Department. We had a, a goal set last spring to try and fundraise thirty thousand dollars for the purchase of extrication equipment, which we've never had. It'd be a new venture for us. It's something in the roughly twelve miles of Highway thirty we cover, as well as numerous county roads. We've had the occasion to use that equipment over the number of years, and had to, had to rely on Marshalltown Fire Department, which has an automatic aid relationship with all the fire departments in the county, that they do respond out to the county for motor vehicle accidents. Uh, we also have a good working relationship with Colo on the west end of our territory to help as well. But relying on other departments delays potential extrication of victims in, in motor vehicle accidents. So we've set this goal to obtain this equipment ourselves. Uh, as Chairman Patton said, it's about thirty thousand dollars for, uh, the three main tools we would need to, to do the job. Uh, we have successfully fundraised about half of that thus far. The efforts continue, but it's, you know, there, there are expenses beyond the thirty thousand dollars. That just gets you the tools. There's supplemental equipment that you need, you know, cribbing and stabilization equipment that's beyond that. Uh, but our initial goal is just to get the thirty thousand, uh, to get the tools purchased.
Are you looking at the battery-operated stuff also?
We are, yep. Uh, we've, we've looked at both, tried different vendors and different, um, models, uh, and we like the, the battery-operated, and I think that's what Marshalltown is going with as well.
So you're both going after the same equipment?
Same type of equipment.
Same type, okay.
Yeah, I think they're, I don't know what vendor they're, they're working with, what brand. Uh, we're looking at either Homatro or Genesis, which is just the, the brand names.
Do you currently have any that's like the older style, that's hydraulically driven?
We don't have any. We, we, we never have.
And what does Colo have?
They have hydraulic right now. And they're starting to, to budget funds for, for upgrading, you know, in the coming years as well, and I think they're probably leaning towards battery. Uh, we've talked with, uh, a couple weeks ago, several of us went down to Urbandale Fire, uh, looked at their rescue truck and what equipment they carry, just to kind of get an idea of what we're gonna need. They have hydraulic, but they've confirmed they are going with the battery-operated as well. That's kind of the trend with everyone.
Is the battery to the point where one person can operate it?
Yes, uh, weight-wise, they've improved greatly from the eighties when Marshalltown's initial tools were purchased, where it took basically two guys to carry the thing from the truck to, to the car to, to use it. Uh, and then you were always tethered. You had twenty to thirty feet of hydraulic hose from the pump, and you were limited in the, the area you could work. Now, if we have a, a vehicle that's down in a ravine and a ditch, you basically can go anywhere with that. Uh, it's, it's much more portable, and, uh, I guess, you wanna say user-friendly, just from a, you know, mechanic standpoint, that one guy can't operate it.
Now, the, um, the other thing is, um, you now have an agreement with Clemens to work with, with them and their department?
We do on the EMS side, uh, just in the last month, due to their responder level up there. Um, they just don't have many responders on the EMS side, uh, so we, as the state, as the EMS side of our department has absorbed the Clemens EMS territory, uh, so we're, we are, their EMS members basically became a member of our department, and we're overseeing that whole territory. They request our services a lot with fire-related type calls, accidents as well. Um, so the, and really, the, the western half of the county, as I outlined in an email, I think to Chairman Patton, that maybe he shared with the two of you, um, the western half of the county's kind of exposed, I guess you could say, um, from a extrication standpoint. Obviously, City of Marshalltown has it, Gilman has a set of tools, I think Haber Hill has a set of tools, but Clemens, State Center Roads in Melbourne, none of us have any right now.
Zuring doesn't have any either, correct?
I don't believe so. I can't speak there. They're in Story County, so we don't, we don't work with them a lot, but I don't believe they do. So it'd be a benefit to, you know, to our residents, uh, the, the people traveling through our district on Highway thirty and the county roads to, you know, to expedite that, that extrication time should there be an accident. In EMS, we talk about the golden hour, and with, with a critically, um, you know, injured patient, a trauma patient, you've got basically one hour to get him to a facility, to get him stabilized, and this would definitely speed that up in getting them out of the vehicle.
Um, a, a, and it isn't because there's a bad attitude with Marshalltown, they got a great attitude, they're willing to come out. It's just that, uh, well, to my place, it's twenty-five miles, and where, if you come up there, it's, it's about thirteen. That's a big difference.
It is, and Marshalltown, I, I can't think of a time when they couldn't come, but you never say never.
Yeah.
You know, they may be tied up with an accident in Marshalltown, or maybe in La Grande or east side of the county, and as bad luck would have it, we have one. Well, then, obviously, they can't respond. Um, so, and sometimes, you know, if it's bad enough, we've had Colo and Marshalltown working on the same vehicle, or two vehicles at the same time, if it's a bad enough accident. You know, Marshalltown's working on getting one patient out, and Colo's working another. So there's, there's times where you need more than one set of tools as well, especially in an ag community, you're dealing with tractors, combines, rollovers, you know, you need kind of all hands on deck, and, and the more help you get, the better.
Okay. Any further questions for Brad?
Nope. When we had our, uh, budget hearing, we discussed and identified fifteen thousand dollars. Going by my notes, we were going to wait until today's, uh, meeting to discuss how we were going to divide that between the two entities.
Is this a, a twenty-eighty agreement that we have with the city?
Yes.
It is. Okay, are, are, what are our bounds? Are we bound to that?
We've just always participated, um, as much as, as fifty percent in the past.
Mm-hmm.
And when we identified fifteen thousand dollars towards the city, that would be roughly fifty percent. And like Bill said earlier, in his discussion with Chief Ryerson, he had no problem with splitting some of that with State Center, and I would agree, I think that's the right thing to do. Uh, it's, I, I think it's gonna give us a lot better coverage throughout the county, especially on the western half. Um, I, I don't know what, uh, type of split you guys got in mind, but I, I think we certainly should, should give something to State Center, and then maybe make it payable upon when they reach their final goal.
The, the fire department can come up with the, the other funds, uh, in some way?
As I understand it, you need thirty thousand, and you're currently at fifteen?
Fifteen.
Okay, so, you know, we, we can help along getting closer to their goal.
Uh, your, your question was in regard to Ryerson?
Marshalltown, right, the Marshalltown?
Yeah, they're budgeting currently.
Uh, Chief Ryerson, as, as I mentioned, when we were having this discussion, he says, "Bill, if you want to give them some of our money, uh, that's okay."
Hmm.
And, uh, because I started out thinking, I, I don't want to hurt someone's feelings, first of all. And then, and then, uh, the group then kind of talked about it, and then, uh, it, it came out, it came out of a group discussion.
And I'd probably recommend, if we do that, do the same thing with the City of Marshalltown as, as, we'll kick in our portion upon purchase of the equipment. Uh, you know, you never, never know if they may put it in their budget this, this coming budget, and, and it, it may not fly, they, for some reason, they may not do it. But my opinion is we should support both.
So right now, we're gonna, gonna try to create a split here, come up with a split between the two departments then?
That's just what I've kind of got in my head, and, you know.
Um, I had mentioned, um, or I, I, I've thought anyway, uh, if we, uh, just, just to start the communication here, our discussion, uh, five to State Center and ten to Marshalltown. Okay, from there, all of you throw your ideas out.
I think that would be very fair. Looking at the amount of, uh, area they're gonna respectively cover, that'd probably be a pretty good split.
Where are you at?
Uh, uh, that would be fine, yes, that would be fine.
Um, okay, we're, we're discussing before the motion, but sometimes that works that way.
Would you rather I put that in the form of a motion?
I would, yeah.
Mr. Chair, I motion that we approve financial supplementation of the City of Marshalltown Fire Department and the State Center Fire Department for new extraction equipment in the amount of ten thousand dollars to the City of Marshalltown and five thousand dollars to the City of State Center, both payable upon purchase.
And I'll second.
I'm gonna give Nan a second here.
Okay.
Okay, would you read back what you have, please?
Um, approve, um, supplement City of Marshalltown, ten thousand dollars for their fire department, State Center Fire Department, um, five thousand dollars for the purchase of new extrication equipment, payable upon purchase by the two departments.
Okay.
Yep, perfect.
Is there any, any further discussion here?
Is this coming out of general basic then, from you guys?
Yes.
Okay, we're quiet, so I assume the conversation and discussion is complete?
Over.
Okay. At this time then, uh, the chair would ask for a vote, roll call vote, please.
Patton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Solace?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
I believe the line item would be community development.
Okay, community development from-
Brad, thank you for taking your time and coming over.
Thank you.
It always helps to get the, uh, we had Chief Ryerson here about a month ago, he talked about it. Uh, he actually brought a list of all the, all the, uh, the calls they've had throughout the county, uh, and, uh, quite a few, actually, they do participate, and I, uh, haven't been involved in this at all, really, and, and I thought everyone's attitude in helping each other is really good.
We have a good working relationship with the Marshalltown, and all departments within the counties.
Yeah.
If there's anything major, we all, we have a county-wide training, we call resources from the departments, so it's-
Your, your, your meetings are always good, uh, the ones I've been to, uh, you, you give, you give, uh, Mrs. Elder a bad time sometimes.
Well, I mean-
No, I just kidding, she enjoys it.
And, and Chief Ryerson also stated they typically donate their equipment to one of the smaller fire departments, so I would imagine one of our departments that does not have equipment would wind up with that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Their last set went to La Grande, I was aware of that.
They had, they had their current set that was made from-
Yeah. But I, I can see when you've got it run from hydraulic, you have to have hydraulic hoses.
Well, you have to maintain it's-
And your hydraulic hoses are just like the ones we have on the farm, they break at the most unopportune time, and, uh, so I, I think when you're looking at this battery thing, uh, that looks like a, a good way to go. Yeah, thanks again for coming. Okay, moving on then to, uh, item number fourteen is public forum. It's time set aside for the public to make, uh, comments on topics of county business other than those listed on this agenda. No action will be taken, uh, on, on any of these topics brought up at the public forum. Anyone left here who wants to come and speak? Jared, you've been quiet, nothing to say?
No, no prognostication on tonight's game?
Nope.
Well, it's gonna be cold, we know that.
It'll be cold.
Yeah. Brad, Brad's been quiet, kinda.
Trying.
Okay, moving on to item number fifteen, adjournment. Uh, the next regular session of January is January second, two thousand and eighteen at nine AM, first business of the day of two thousand and eighteen. All business to be acted upon at that session shall be submitted to the County Auditor, Recorder's Office, or the Board of Supervisors' Office by Thursday, December twenty-eighth, two thousand and seventeen at one PM. There being no further business to come before the board, the meeting is adjourned at nine forty-nine. Thank you all for coming.